I'd like to call the Public Health and Security Committee to order a roll call, please.
Alderman Suback?
Here.
Alderman Coles?
Yeah.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Knype?
Here.
Alderman Pizik? Alderman Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Shockey?
Here.
Alderman Tolemy?
Here.
Timing. Good timing.
I need a motion to approve the minutes on January 11th, 2007.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Recommendation for report, recommendation for squad car replacement program. Chief, you want to step us through that?
At the current time, I'd like to take advantage of the state purchasing procedure and place an order for three squad cars to replace our current fleet. In the memo which is attached in your packet, you'll see that we're identifying three of our squad cars and our K-9 unit for replacement with the mileages that are on there. At this time, these are the vehicles that we are looking to replace under state bid, under state purchase, and we would like to have the recommendation be approved and passed along to council to permit us to place the order before the end of the month.
So any questions on that? Marshall?
With the rising fuel costs, you're asking for a Ford Explorer to replace the K-9 unit. What's the difference in gas mileage between the Ford Explorer and a?
Two miles per gallon.
Sounds like you're ready for that question. And why do you think it's necessary to go with a Explorer besides a regular car? Let me finish. Are we making the concessions for the dog or for the officer?
For the dog.
And why is that? Easier to get in and out or what? More room?
Correct. Using a passenger vehicle right now. If we convert over, it'd be quite easier for us to take the equipment that we have, modify it for our vehicle, and get the dog in and out of the vehicle quite easier than what it is right now.
And the cost between going with the Ford Explorer versus the Crown Victoria is minimal, right? About $200?
Yes. Last paragraph, I believe it's about less than $300.
Mr. Coles?
To get back to Marshall's thing, the reason that they've probably gone to an Explorer is because they could put a crate in the back of the car and keep the dog there instead of having the dog loose in the front backseat floating around. And also, if they want to put a crate in the back for, if they pick up another dog or something like that, they have the room to put it in there, plus the room in the in the car where they don't have it in a car, but they can have it in an Explorer. I just wanted to help them out.
Best way to equate it, a passenger vehicle is exactly for that. Passenger's, a utility vehicle is exactly for that cargo and/or ancillary equipment associated with police work.
Mr. Knype?
Yeah, just take a little further. All four of the K-9 units out of DuPage County all have SUVs or Explorers or trucks, light trucks to provide for the K-9 units.
So any other questions on this? I'd like to make a motion to allow purchases squad car replacement, the Crown Vic, to replace the Crown Vics. You're replacing three cars, right?
That is correct. We're replacing two Crown Vics and a Chevy Impala. So we are looking for permission to order and not to receive until after May. To order now and not receive until after May 1st.
Okay. I make a motion to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. LI Waste Container. Jeff, you're going to handle that one?
Yeah, I'll start it out. Per council recommendation, staff was asked to research possible programs that could be beneficial to Wooddale residents. A number of programs were mentioned. This was one of them. And council gave the direction to go forward with researching it into greater detail. This issue was also brought up previously at the Public Health and Safety Committee by Alderman Tolemy. He was concerned, he's previously concerned about plastic garbage bags just being put out on Monday morning without a can. And he's concerned about wildlife getting in into the garbage and really causing a mess for the community on Monday mornings. So staff was given direction to have Rich Vander Mullen of Allied Waste Services come in and give an overview of some proposals for the city to go with a uniform waste container program. Just in summary, there was two proposals. One of the proposals was to have the city go ahead and purchase these containers for all the residents. And the other proposal would be for the residents to have a nominal fee increase per month to attain these containers. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Richard Vander Mullen of Allied Waste to have a brief presentation and then answer any questions you may have on the program.
I want to thank Alderman Wesley and the Public Health and Safety Committee for the opportunity to talk to you tonight about waste container options. It's our understanding that a number of residents have contacted the city manager's office about the city supplying large garbage carts or toters. All of our residential customers in eight communities have garbage carts. We began our first cart program in 1998. Currently, all homes in six of our Cook County municipal customers and two in our DuPage County customers use carts. The main advantage of a cart is a uniform look on the service day. There's going to, there would be much less blowing litter since the lid is attached to the cart. There would be fewer problems with wildlife and pets, pests. The carts and the lids don't blow in the street or into a ditch since the cart is meant to be stable. It actually can withstand up to 40 mile an hour winds when it's empty. The carts are very easy to move. They have 12-inch wheels. There's a handlebar on the back. You also don't get dirty carrying them. And the carts are convenient since one cart will hold the equivalent of three garbage cans. The disadvantages would be, since the carts are not supplied and maintained by the resident, there is some additional expense. And storage can be difficult in townhome developments where there's not a lot of space. We offered two plans. One where our company would supply and maintain the carts. The other where the city would purchase the carts and our company would assemble, deliver, and maintain the carts. Under either option, we'd continue to pick up all the material as long as it was in an acceptable container, you know, per the village, city ordinances. The 95-gallon cart is about 41 inches tall. It's a little over 29 inches wide and it's 34 inches deep. And by way of comparison, a garbage can is 32, a typical garbage can, is 32 inches high and 20 inches in diameter. So the space requirements for a cart is less than for two garbage cans, but a little bit more than for one standard garbage can. Alderman Suback had a question, you know, why I didn't think it was the time to do it several years ago.
Right. When, I'm going to interrupt. When we negotiated the contract and we went for requests for proposals, that was one of the first things I asked you was, I see all these other communities, I think it was Bensonville, I don't know if Almert stood it, but Chiller Park, we're having these carts. And I thought actually the residents would save money because I thought there were lower worker compensation claims because it's picked up by a machine and not the worker. So I was trying to get Allied, that time, Waste Management to give us a better, or BFI, to give us a better bid for the residential customers. And your response at that time was, Wooddale's not a community that needs these carts. It was more focused on certain communities that had garbage problems and you didn't foresee, and that was about two years ago, that Wooddale had this kind of problem. And I'm just trying to figure out, in your professional opinion, which I respect, what changed between then and now that now we're a community that can use these types of containers?
Well, the biggest thing is, to a large degree, the public is already buying carts. And the way we're set up, we're really set up for garbage cans, you know, 32, 33-gallon cans with two handles. And the majority of the carts that the public is buying, our trucks aren't equipped to dump. So we've taken a 30-gallon can and we have 45 and sometimes even 60-gallon carts that don't have a proper handles and our truck isn't equipped to dump them. So that's the main thing. And then there seems to be public demand for them.
And what have you seen, because one of the problems we have in Wooddale are raccoons. And what have you, and I think our ordinance requires people to put it out no more than one night ahead of time or even that morning. What have you seen with other communities with raccoon problems? With, if they put this out the night before, the ability for the raccoons to enter still and cause havoc?
It's going to be minimized. I can't tell you that it'll entirely go away. But I don't think you're going to have a problem with raccoons in the future. You know, unless it's unless it's below a tree or something that the raccoon can climb up on the tree.
Okay. The other question is, it's my understanding, maybe it's not your company, but there's some different size of these carts because we have a lot of senior citizens and that this might be a real large container. Right now, if they're putting one bag out a week or two bags, they probably don't need anything this large. Do you have anything that's smaller size for a senior citizen who doesn't need a 90-gallon?
Yeah. We have a cart that's somewhat smaller, a 68-gallon cart.
Sure.
It, as far as the floor space, it doesn't take up a lot less floor space. And actually, just the design of the larger cart is such that it's a little lower than the smaller cart. So, but I think if anybody would want to try the cart, they're very easy to maneuver. It's far simpler to maneuver one of those carts in a single can of garbage because of the wheels and the leverage.
Mr. Chairman, one follow-up question. Can we do this where it's an optional for the residents that if, let's say the city wasn't going to buy the carts at $170,000 for everybody, but we wanted to make it available? Can we latch on to this new program and then I just pay the additional $2 a month, whatever it is per month, and I can get one of those garbage cans delivered by Allied?
We could look into that.
Or does everybody have to do it?
I think it would be best to do a change overall at once. And if, of course, we wouldn't require people to use a cart if they wanted to continue to use a garbage can, they could continue to use a garbage can.
Would they still get charged, surcharged per month if they don't use it?
I haven't considered that yet, Alderman.
Okay.
Are you done with the presentation that you had before? Any more questions are asked?
I'm finished.
Okay. Sharkey?
I'm a little confused about the two proposals that you're presenting to us. The first one is $3 a month per household?
Right.
Additional.
Right.
And the second one is $3 a month plus 25 cents per unit?
No, the, on this, I'd have to look at which is first and which is second. The second one would simply be $3 a month for any, if somebody wanted a second or third cart. And the second proposal is basically where the city of Wooddale would purchase the carts.
Wait, you're saying that the first proposal is saying that the first cart would be free and the second cart would be $3 a month?
In the first proposal, everything would be built into a standard price. And it's a little under $3 a month. And we would both purchase, maintain, replace the carts. In the second proposal?
Wait, no, let's, I'm still-
Yeah, I know. I'm not trying to throw you.
Yeah. The first one, you're saying that it's, is this an additional $3 a month?
Not exactly. A little less than that, sir. The first proposal is less than $3 a month.
What is a little less?
Jeff, can you?
I think, I think I can sum it up a little better. It's my understanding that there's two alternatives. Alternative one would be that the city would purchase the carts for Wooddale residents and that would be a cost of around $170,000. If we chose to do that, residents' bills would raise a quarter, just a quarter a month for the maintenance of the cans that we purchased for them. So if the cans get damaged or they, you know, need repairs, that quarter is, that's all they're going to get charged, a quarter extra a month. That's if we purchased the containers for them. So their garbage bill will go up one quarter, 25 cents. Option two is their bill would go up, you know, $2 or $3 a month if we don't purchase the cans for them to cover the costs for the cans. I think that sums it up.
So you're saying that the $170,000 would come out of our regular budget? And it would not be passed on to the citizens except for?
Citizens would have to pay 25 cents in case the cans got damaged. So BFI would then repair them.
Strictly maintenance?
Yeah, maintenance, yes.
Okay. Yesterday, I went to the senior club meeting and there were only about 54 people there because of the cold weather. But I did have, matter of fact, I asked Jeff to have those delivered to the city, to the senior meeting. And the, I asked two ways. I said, you know, would you, do you want these in place of what you have now? And the first thing they talked about is cost. What's it going to cost? And I thought you had told me it was going to be about $2 to $3 a month. And that's what I told them. And they said, absolutely not. That one person there wanted the carts. Now we're talking about a quarter or 25 cents a month? And does that mean that we could use either size cart, whatever they preferred? Or how do we, how are we going to handle that?
I apologize for the miscommunication, but, you know, the options are what I said. It's 25 cents if we purchase the carts and $3 if we don't. And if we did purchase the carts, the bigger, the bigger container would be the standard container. But any resident who calls up and requests any smaller container is certainly entitled to that container. It's part of the program.
Now, I'm not sure which way to go because they, they're under one way of thinking and now we're talking something else.
I think, I'm going, one minute.
Go ahead.
The thing is, it's, 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 it would be a quarter if we purchased it as a city. That's a problem. If we don't and we go out and the people buy it, it will be added $3 per month to the garbage bill. So if the city purchased all the cans for the whole city, it will only be a quarter. That's what I'm bringing out of this proposal. But if we don't and the citizens want them, it will be added $3 to their garbage bill.
What budget is it going to come out of? That's what I'd like to know.
Well, that's what we're going to have to look at and look at before we make this decision tonight. And hopefully, we get the answer what budget this could come out of. But let me take a couple more questions to wrap this up here.
Thank you. I would say, based on the two proposals, I would say no to the $3 per month tacked on to the resident. If we're going to do this, I feel it should come from the city. It betters the community. It betters the parents. And then let the quarter be tacked on every month though for the maintenance. And this is in keeping with, when I was walking door to door in my campaign, somewhere three residents said, well, I want to look more like ITAS. I want things to be neater, cleaner around here. So doing this type of thing, I feel it will get us in that direction. In terms of, I do have a few questions. Are these cans interchangeable with other providers? So let's say, three to five years down the road, if we find ourselves with another provider, I don't want to have to re-replace all of our garbage cans.
They should be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And I would say that both proposals, though, do need work in terms of the terms and conditions with the timeframe. That I know that we're in a contract. It's probably going to expire in about three, three and a half years, I think. So I don't want to have a contract with garbage cans that extends beyond my contract with the pickup itself. So I think that's something that we can look at together. And then lastly, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Any other questions, Tolemy?
Yeah, actually, I have a couple. First off, I'm going to ask, Jeff, how many years left in the contract?
I believe there's three, three years.
Okay. And they want to up it to five. Under either one of these, they're saying in order to make this program work, they want to up it to five. Hold on a second. And then, second question I have is, you have the two different cans, okay? You're saying, and I'm guessing that the original cost, $170,000, was based on the large can? How are you going to determine, okay, how many people want the smaller can? That'd be one of the questions. And then with that, how much less would that be off of the $170,000 or $190? Because it says $170,000 or $190,000. And then the second thing is, if somebody decides to go with the smaller can, is it still 25 cents a month or is that prorated and is that less? Because the can is smaller.
I asked him that question to begin with. When they did it in Bensonville, they gave everybody a large can. And they said, if you want a smaller can, you can call up and we'll drop off a smaller one to give them a chance to try it. And they only had a few people that took the smaller can. The actual cost would be, would be based on how many actual units are furnished. And it runs about $65 a unit. So the proposal is an estimate. So we could, if you're interested in going with this, we could give you that cost.
I guess my concern, my concern is this, okay? My mother lives in Addison, okay? And they have these cans and she has one of the large cans. You know, she's senior. And, you know, like Alderman Suback had said, you know, most seniors put out one or two small bags, okay? I mean, she's got to wheel this thing out every week by herself, okay? And granted, they wheel fairly easily, okay? But for a senior, you know, as you get older, even lifting, and I'm not sure if I missed the weight, how much they are, the weight is on them. But it's difficult, okay, for these, you know, for the seniors to, even on wheels, move these things. And now you add ice on top of that, it's even more difficult. So I don't know if I'm personally sold on, you know, bringing these into the community. You know, the original question that had come up was, you know, about our existing ordinance and what our existing ordinance stated, you know, was, did it actually require every individual to put their garbage out in a garbage can? And what I was told was that, no, they really don't. As long as they put it out in bags, they can do that in the plastic bags as well. So I guess from my perspective, I mean, before I would approve any of this, I would want to see it better defined, exactly what is the cost going to be to the city? And then what is the cost going to be to the residents? I think, you know, when I look at this, I don't really see, you know, between proposal one and proposal two. And I understand the difference in terms that the city's going to pick up the cost on the one. But it's still, in my opinion, it's very vague and needs to be clarified a lot better. So I would, I would recommend that we send this back and get, get it more refined. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Coles?
I would like to tell these gentlemen a little thing that happened to somebody on our street who had one of these, who your truck picked it up because he said it wasn't allowed in the city. One of them. And about, I have a little small garbage can, which is galvanized, which I've had for many, many years, which is a heavy-duty one, which you can't put no dents in. They didn't like it and they took that one from me. So I just want to know that if we bought one of these things, if it's going to stick around, or who's going to guarantee that that ain't going to be picked up by your men? All right? That's all I got to say.
Mr. Suback?
The idea behind the city purchasing these was to thank the residents because Jeff came up with a unique way, because of the referendum that passed and the additional money we're going to have for infrastructure. It was how, do we give a water rebate? Do we give them, do we lower the water rates? What do we do? And then Jeff came up with, because he was getting a lot of calls, that a lot of residents were saying, how come we don't have this? My question for Mr. Vander Mullen is, number one, how did BFI become Allied? Did Allied buy BFI out or did the contract follow you? Huh?
In 1999.
Okay. If we went with the proposal where it was, the residents had to buy them themselves and we did something else to thank them on the referendum through a water rebate, can it be optional for the residents where if I want it, I can pay $3 per month to have the great blue can? And if my neighbor next door doesn't want it, they don't have to?
I'd have to consider that.
Okay.
That wasn't my understanding of what was being requested of us.
I'd like, I'd like to know that answer because in a perfect world, you make it optional to start and not, then you're not forcing anybody to do it. One of my concerns is just where people will store them because they are a little bit large and that most people's garages are filled to the rim now. And I keep my garbage cans inside, but this, you know, would it fit or not, I don't know. The other question is, can Allied still do the proposal if we don't extend out five years? So we just do a proposal for the balance of our three years?
Again, I'd have to consider that. To deliver the cans, the carts, for us to assemble, the carts don't come assembled. So even if you were to purchase them, we're going to need to assemble the carts.
There's cost to it.
There's, yeah, considerable cost to it. $10,000 to $15,000 is my estimate. So it's, to us, it's a lot of money just to get them to the residents.
But because we have three years, then it's really, we're asking, you're asking for a two-year extension if Allied will make this commitment to the city through their proposal. It's not five New Years?
No, sir.
Okay. I still think it's something we should, you know, continue to pursue. I think those are all legitimate questions that we brought up. But this is something, if we make it optional for the residents and work out a good price, I mean, the one thing Wooddale's always done well is garbage and that's because of Mr. Vander Mullen. I mean, we went through this proposal last time. They wanted to change what dates we were. We are going to have some trucks, some areas be picked up on Monday, some on Tuesday, some on Wednesday. We're very uniform with garbage. I've never had, since I've been up here seven and a half years, never had a complaint about garbage. Occasionally, it gets missed, but otherwise, Wooddale does garbage well. And if, for two more years, if we can put something in place where it's optional, I would support it 100%.
Mr. Johnson?
Just related to your comments, Alderman. The DuPage Water Commission did pass in committee the water rate reduction today from $1.40 per thousand gallons down to $1.25. Now, that is in committee. It won't be final until the budget gets approved. But that is something we will be addressing at a future date, whether we are going to be passing that savings on to the residents.
Swinger?
There are concerns that we have about how it's going to fit in garages, the handleability of it. And in some townhomes that they don't have the luxury of putting it on the side of their home because it's a walkway or it's not green space, whatnot. So is it possible to do a sample testing of maybe either a sample of 10 different people in Wooddale with the can to see how it works for a month? Or the council here, I haven't, either way, but to do some kind of sampling of how it works?
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Hang on. Shark?
First of all, we're not, we're not going, this is not a cure-all. You understand that? Because the most complaints I get is for about the recycling, recycling garbage where the people put the papers out and don't tie them and don't put them in a bag and they're flying down the street. Elizabeth Park, for instance, has their own rule that people have to put their garbage in a black or brown plastic bag. That's the rule they have over there. I don't know if they're included in our pickup agreement with Allied. Does anybody know? Or do they have their own arrangements?
Townhomes have their own arrangement. They, they don't go through the regular because of the uniqueness of the pickup.
Okay. So what I'm saying is that, just remember, this is not a cure-all. I wish there was some way that we could either come up with some kind of container for the recyclable- I wish there was some way that we could either come up with a, some kind of container for the recyclable, especially paper as well, or change the ordinance to say that they cannot let it be flying down the street, or they'll be fined or something. Because the same people seem to do it every week, over and over and over again. I agree with Alman Tolemy, I think we ought to define this a little bit better and come back at another meeting, decide at that time. And in the meantime, I, I also liked Alderman Winger's suggestion that we perhaps try it out in maybe a part of Wooddale, maybe a dozen or two dozen people to try it out and see what they think of it, including some seniors. So, they can see what they, you know, how heavy they are and everything. So, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to that effect, or?
In, in a minute. Mr. Tolemy?
Just, just wanted to follow up real quick. Mr. Vander Mullen, you said it costs around fifteen grand, fifteen thousand dollars to assemble the, the cans. I'm guessing that you're not gonna absorb that, that would, that would become part of the, the cost to the city as far as the purchasing the items?
No, we, we offered to absorb that. We think, we did offer to absorb it.
You did offer to absorb that, okay? Then the next thing I guess I wanted to say was, when you're defining this better, I would like to know, if, if a resident does go with the smaller can, is it gonna be less than twenty-five cents per month?
No.
You know, if the city?
And, not trying to interrupt, but there's basically no difference in the cost to us or to you.
Well, if, okay, let me ask you. If I, what is the cost of each individual can? There's gotta be a cost difference between each individual can. You can't tell me that they're both the same cost.
It's about a dollar, dollar and a half difference between the small one and the big one.
And, and can I ask you how much roughly they are?
About fifty-three dollars.
Fifty-three dollars, okay.
So, I, there may be?
And you can buy, and you get them, and if you were to buy, let's say, four thousand of them, roughly for the city of Wooddale?
That's why there isn't much difference between the two.
You're buying them in bulk, you would get a discount though, right, on buying bulk?
Not below the number I quoted you.
Okay.
The, the number I quoted you is?
Okay.
Yeah, what we pay.
The three dollars per month, or two dol- whatever they is per month, that, that is for future maintenance also. So, that when it gets hit by a car, I call up Allied and says, Mike, or my can got stolen. Allied comes out and dumps a new one on my, for no additional cost. So, it's also for future?
That's right.
It builds up a reserve.
There's a, quite a bit of an expense in maintaining these.
Sure.
In replacing them.
With respect to recycling, do you have a can available for recycling? Because right now, we're using those blue open bins. Can we have one, a blue one for the garbage and like a, a smaller yellow one, or maybe the same size for recycling?
We can look into it.
That might solve Alderman Shockey's issue of papers blowing around. Now that, now the recycling has a lid on it. We can look into that?
We can look into that.
My last question is, Mayor, it might help if you could stand next to the can for the, at home to see what, how it scale? And if you could actually get in one of the cans, we could show the residents how actually large or small they are? Sure.
Mr. Tolemy?
Yeah. I, I guess I'm confused. Do you replace these then, at, at the end of sixteen months? Do you replace them?
No.
But you continue the three-dollar charge?
Right.
Okay, so if, if three dollars, if it's three dollars a month, then in fourteen, roughly fourteen and a half months, it's, I've already bought a new can?
We'll replace them as needed and?
Okay, so if my can lasts though for, for, you know, for, let's say theoretically for, for five years, okay? I've now paid for that can at least three times, or close to four times? If, if, if you told me?
Not, not, well?
Well, no, no. If you told me they're fifty-three dollars a can?
Right.
Okay, at, at roughly fourteen or fifteen months, fourteen and a half months per can, I'd get, basically, I would get almost four cans in five years.
If you disregard the cost of delivery and the maintenance and the replacement cost to us. And some cans will last five years, others won't.
All right, no, that's all I wanted to point out, was that, was that theoretically, and think about this, in five years, we're talking about four more cans at three dollars, you know, three dollars per month, okay? But yet, if your can is good, you're not gonna get one. So, you know, I don't know. At this point, I'm not really sold on this idea, so I'm sorry.
All right, any other questions? I take, Mr. Winger, go ahead.
Just one more point that it, it might, I know we're gonna discuss the survey next, the, the resident survey. And this is a question that we might wanna put in the survey itself to say, how do you feel about the, you know, garbage situation, or however we worded? And do you want a better can to hold your garbage? Do you see cans rolling down the street all the time? Do you have problems with raccoons? Just questions like that, to see what kind of feedback we get back. Thank you.
But if you make it optional, if it's three bucks a month, and they don't have to do it, it doesn't matter. Then you just, the people that want it will pay for it. And if they pay for the garbage can five times over, maybe they don't really care because it's nice that Allied comes and drops it off. And the wheel's bad, they come up, they drop off a new one, I don't need to go buy it. So, if you make it optional, and the people sign up for it, they sign up for it. As long as they know what the cost is, and they pay for it.
Okay. I think, I think the sense is, Jeff?
I'll just add one more closing remark. When we, when we speak about the three-dollar fees, certainly, that, that's an option. But there is the other alternative, alternative, which was the original premise of the study was a, a give-back to the residents. So, the three dollars would certainly not qualify for a give-back to the residents. The option of the city purchasing the cans would qualify as a give-back. And that doesn't, three dollars doesn't factor into that option, so.
Okay, I have one question. If, if we would make the decision tonight, where would this money come from to pay for this? I, I just?
We're, we're going to get into the budget, and, you know, we do have the, the new sales tax. And that's where we were thinking it would, it would come from indirectly. Because we will now be able to fund infrastructure needs, and that would free up some of the money in the, in the general fund. But we can get into that if you want us to go ahead and look at that.
No, not, I mean, down the line maybe.
Right.
So, I think the sense is, is, is the committee here that we need to go back and relook at this on issues on, on the fees. And if it's optional, if people could buy the cans, and then look at trying to test them out in some of our areas to see if that will work. Is that the sense on this council? I take it?
I, I've been up here seven years, and I very rarely heard our, our minute taker speak. But she gave me a compelling argument in Itasca, because at first, I was against it. And then she correctly, after the committee meeting last time, said, nobody in Itasca, they didn't really want it. And then minute, they got it. All of a sudden, the raccoon problem got better, and it's, it's, it's a little bit of change. And everybody survived, and then, just like the sidewalks, once they're in, they enjoyed them. So, I, I don't wanna force Eileen to speak, but she gave that compelling speech to me. And if she wants to give it tonight, the chairman will recognize her, I'd love to hear her opinion on this.
Would you like to speak tonight?
Okay, in Itasca, it is optional. We decided to give it a try. We have five people in our homes, so we went with the larger one. We've been battling raccoons over twenty years. Since we got them about six months ago, we've had no raccoons at all. They cannot get into them, they've not blown away. It's easier to haul them up and down the driveway. Space is not an issue for us, we put it next to the garage, so we're happy with them.
Okay. Well?
I will add though. I think Marshall asked about this. We pay two dollars a month. And after I found out tonight what the cost is on the can, after mine is paid for, I'm curious how long we'll have to keep paying the two dollars.
Okay. So, I am going to make a motion to take it back, I would say, back to committee and have staff work on the issues on the fees. The, in, in the meantime, I would like to see if we could get some testing done in our committee with the cans. Is that? Everyone in favor of that? Okay, all in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. The garbage can talk, we'll go on to the next one. Recommendation of citizens survey. Frank, you've taken this, or is this pretty much informational?
I'll take it.
I'm sorry, Jeff?
It'll just be brief. Well, first, I just wanna say it was, it's like Alderman Winger read my mind. Perhaps we should add the stipulation, we should maybe wait for these surveys to come back and incorporate the garbage container question in the survey as another, another factor before we make our decision. And basically, within this memo, I give a, a sample citizen survey, and, and this could be tweaked pretty much however we want. But I thought this was a good representation of, of some of the questions that, that are relevant in today's municipalities. And staff believes that surveying is important because it, it really gives a, a good idea of, of what's going on in the community. Certainly, Alderman could, could go door-to-door, or, or they get phone calls from constituents. But they really don't get in touch with the electorate on, on a, on a larger scale. And, and staff is proposing putting the survey out and promoting a, possibly a five-dollar rebate on a, on a future water bill for the participation in, in the survey program. And I think the costs of those five-dollar rebates, if we get a twenty-five percent response rate, would certainly be worth it to the city to get this valuable information. And this, of course, would be a, an ongoing thing. We, we couldn't just survey one time and then forget it. We'd like to survey, find out exactly what our residents think, and then, from, from year to year, see if we're really improving and doing what, what they're asking of us. So, that's a, staff recommendation would be to go forward with the survey. Of course, we could tweak it how we want, this is just a sample. And possibly offer a, a program with a five-dollar rebate within the water bill if, if you submit the survey back to the city.
Okay, it's open for some questions now.
It looks like you had a National Research Center in Colorado was the one that we would send these back to. And is there anything in the contract that they says they're not gonna sell this information, even though it's got really no private information? Let me finish, Jeff.
Okay.
Because what my concern would be is that, because they're asking for, you know, household incomes, education, anybody disabled in your house. And I wouldn't want, all of a sudden, we do these surveys, and all of a sudden, now we get a flood of junk mail coming in to the residents because this group sold it to somebody else. I wouldn't mind, I think some of the questions are great, but like, does COD have a statistics class or something? Or is there any way where it's not a company that's running the survey? It's more of a, and I know we can't do it in-house, but?
Well, actually, I, I think we, we could do it in-house. And I, you know, I didn't wanna recreate the wheel on this. I didn't wanna sit here and, and write down a hundred questions, because I, you know, I got this off the ICMA website. And I thought what would be best for the city of Wooddale is to bring this to you, see what you thought of this survey. Then certainly, I could, personally, I could recraft the survey if there's any problems with the survey. And we'd put out our own, our own survey and, and work through this in-house.
You're not using this company?
No, this is just sample questions.
Great.
And so this, that's good for cost, it keeps costs down, we're not gonna outsource this, we're gonna do it all in-house.
Wonderful, thank you.
Kenai?
Yeah, I like the idea of the survey, but as far as the incentive program, what if you don't pay for city water or garbage? What incentive would you offer?
That's yet to be determined, but we would, if you agree with the concept, the idea was to bring the concept to you, we would craft the survey, and then we would come up, if, if you don't meet that requirement, a similar type of incentive to get you to answer the, the survey. We're, we're, at this point, we're ready to go a step further if you approve the concept. We would come up with something, and there are several things we could do in the, in?
I like the consensus, it's just that, let, you know, if we're gonna do some type of incentive, let's be equal to all our citizens.
Mr. Winger?
I'm in agreement with Alderman Kenai, we need to look at all the citizens. There's a lot of people that live in high-rises, condo buildings, that don't actually get a water bill yet. They pay in their assessments for water. So, so we need to make sure that we reach out to those people as well and have an equal kind of incentive. The, a follow-up question though, do you feel that this survey addresses? I know we're talking about commu- community development, economic development, trying to bring in a, you know, a, a, a little downtown area. And do you feel this questions the people enough to, to get their sense of whether they would like economic development or not? And, and then, if you feel it doesn't, I think we should probably add a few questions in here to, to get a better sense of whether people wanna see a downtown or, or they don't. Thank you.
I'll, I'll address both those, both those issues. First off, I'll just throw something out there, possibly a, a five-dollar rebate on, on a vehicle sticker for those residents in the high, in the high-rises. That's a possibility. And to the second point, the reason I, I chose this survey is because I think it had, it, it's almost complete for, for us. There's minor tweaking, I think there's economic development issues in here. There's, you know, ease of car travel in the community is in here. Ease of, you know, employment opportunities. There's, there's all sorts of factors in here that I, I think mesh with, with our compu- uh, community. And I think it just needs some minor tweaking. I think we could add questions, and we can, you know, certainly take, we can take a lot of the questions out of here. But I do think it's, has good substance, so I don't think it would take that much tweaking.
Tolemy?
Just real quick. I guess you're looking for us to say, go ahead, I would say, go ahead. But what I would recommend is, when you've put it together and what you think you're gonna send out, before you send it out, I would recommend bring it back to the committee so that we can, you know, review it one more time. And if anybody, what I would recommend is that if anybody has anything else that they think should be added on here, we can call Jeff and, and recommend it to Jeff, and he can add it. And then, when it all comes back, we can review it and say yay, nay, just do it.
That's exactly what I was envisioning. I was just envisioning a, a basic approval of the idea of the survey. Then what I would do is I would take constructive criticism from the committee and tweak the survey. And then bring it back to committee for, for final approval before we put anything out.
Marshall?
I, I think I, one thing I would check on the incentive program, I like the idea of the vehicle sticker, but also maybe check with Target or Jewel, and we give them a five-dollar gift card. And maybe Target or Jewel will give you a discount if we're gonna buy five thousand dollars with the gift cards, maybe they'll donate them. And then we can hand them out to the residents to use them back at the store, and they can get sales tax back into Wooddale.
Mr. Coles?
One thing, Jeff, don't put down the amount of money that people make, because people don't wanna know that. That's something that shouldn't be in, because that's personal. And also, another thing is what education they had, because that's also personal. Because you get some people that'll, that have high diplomas that are out in second field somewheres, paddling a canoe in a field. So, I mean, so don't put that in. Them two things that you should leave out.
Mr. Tolemy?
I, I don't agree. I think you should put them in, and as always, what you do is at the top, you put any questions you feel uncomfortable with, you just don't answer them. Okay? Because I think really, when you, you know, in, in surveys, and I've seen a lot of surveys, when you look at the surveys, there's a lot, they all ask for that kind of information, okay? And I think what we need to do too, Jeff, is make sure that you've got it clear in there, this information, going back to what Alderman Subak had said, this information will not be sold or given to anybody else, okay? You know, we have to figure out how we even want it back. I mean, do we, I, I don't even think we want people's names, or do, or do we want people's names?
Well, we kinda have to put the names in there if we wanna give water bill rebates.
You're right. But, but, but I'm saying, but then it's?
Stuff disappears.
But then it's gotta be, you know, once the information is gathered, then it's gotta be shredded. I mean, you keep the results, but you shred everything else. And I mean, somehow, it's gotta be made clear. With everything that's going on today, you know, with, with identity theft, I mean, it's just, it's too much information for, you know, for the city. And I would say that whoever handles it, there should be two people involved, dual control, in handling the answers.
Okay. Let's wrap this up here. So, I think you got your message. Go ahead and, and tweak it, or whatever you gotta do. And I think everyone's on board. And I think everyone's on board to send the survey out, but send it back to us before. And anyone that has anything to, that, questions they want to add on this, I know the garbage can's going to be on there, so feel free to call Jeff. So we'll, we'll discuss that as soon as you get back ready, Jeff. Okay? Okay, we can move on here. Any other thing, problem there? All right. Got that? I didn't consider future meetings, smoking ban in the city of Wooddale. Anything else?
This is added, I think.
No. Okay. This is going to be finance. Okay, make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Post carry.
I'm calling to order the Finance and Administration Committee meeting of February 8th, 2007.
The city manager would like to interject for a moment.
Yeah, due to the fact we have the attorney present tonight, we, we'd like permission to change the order of the meetings. And at this time, we'd, we'd like to convene the, the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee just for one item and we'll go right back to the Finance Committee.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee to order. Let the minutes reflect that the same people are here. Alderman Tolemy is here and Alderman Pyzak is still absent. Next item, I'll do this quickly, is the approval of minutes of January 11th, 2007.
Second.
Any corrections, additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, the next item we'll go down is to item five, the report and recommendation, case number 06B14 grocery departments. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Alderman Tolemy and recuse myself from this hearing.
No. Okay, what I would like to do at this time is I'd like to ask Roger, you or, or John or Ross, who's going to, who's going to take this? Cause I'll be honest with you, at this point, I'm not sure how many, how many variations we're still looking at. I mean, I guess my question first off would be, how come it's even back in committee since it was voted down the last time? Number one, you know? And then number two, what are the actual, how, what is the actual number of ordinances or variances that we're actually looking at at this point? Cause I'll be honest with you, with all this, all this information that was put in here, yeah, I, I really had a hard time understanding how many variations we're looking at now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'm going to hand it over to Ross, he can kind of walk us through.
Well, first kind of get my first question answered. Why is it back on the agenda when we voted it down at the last committee meeting?
I, I'll answer the question. Basically, what has happened here is this is a very unusual case. And the reason why it's unusual is because of the action that was taken concerning, on this issue with two other city councils. And this situation, basically, as it exists, requires a, a legal review before we could move forward as we thought we could. Staff's concern in this issue is life safety issues. The attorney's concern is that we take into account the previous actions of the other councils and our current situation regarding the zoning. And so it is somewhat confusing. And that's why we do have the attorney here tonight. Now, it, we can do this two different ways. We can have the attorney do the overview first, or we could have staff do how we ended up getting, getting here, whichever you prefer.
Well, Frank, that, I'm sorry, that still doesn't explain to me why it's back on the agenda. If it was, if it came to committee and committee voted it down, it was voted down. I mean, from my perspective, it was voted down. And why would, you know, why all of a sudden would it, would it come back or show back up on the, on the agenda? It should have gone directly to council and council should have been able to vote yea or nay on it. Or, or refer it back. And they didn't do either.
One, because this was a, an unusual issue, we didn't have all the information and, and we just did get the, the final legal review today on this. Prior to that, I, I understand, and that's why, what you do with this, where exactly this goes based on the issues was a difficult question. And basically, we felt it belonged on committee first before the council could take action. If in fact, council needs to take action, and that's one of the questions we're trying to resolve.
I do, Dave.
Yeah.
I really think the reason why this was brought back to committee is because there was so many questions from, from the building department regarding it and, and our legal perspective. And we wanted to make sure we made the right decision. That's why we asked for a legal's opinion on this in, 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 in council. Because I, I don't think you were here last meeting, if I'm mistaken. I think the problem is we asked the table at the, before we get legal opinion on a decision that has to be made because there was some issues that was addressed here in the committee and we needed a legal.
Was that done at council?
I believe that was January 18th.
Okay.
And that's, that's, that's the reason, I believe.
Okay, so then.
There was some legal opinions.
Okay. So, okay, I still don't agree, but okay. So Ross, I guess you're going to take over, so go ahead.
Staff's opinion would be is that the number of variations required for this development depend greatly on, on how the development is, is viewed. It will be required to file a plat under the Illinois Condominium Property Act. With that filing of the plat, it is staff's interpretation that the zoning code specifies that a plat cannot be approved unless it is in compliance with the zoning code. With that, that's why the variations were proposed or presented before the zoning board for the four variations that were in the packet. It is staff's belief that those are the four variations that would be necessary if the property were actually to be considered differently, other than staff's opinion in that it is eight lots rather than one lot, that that should be allowed to remain. The number of variations would go from four to approximately 26. The petitioner did state.
Russ, I'm sorry. So if we were to look at it as eight separate lots of record, the variations would go from four to 26? Okay, and how are we looking at it?
Staff's interpretation is that this is one lot with five buildings on it.
Okay. And what is the, the owner, how, how is the owner trying to look at it?
The owner is also, when I brought this question up, because the, the information that was presented to staff indicated that it, it might be eight lots. I questioned it with the assessor because there is only one PIN number for this property. And I also did do some questioning of the, of the petitioner themselves and they, they responded back, we are presenting this as one lot.
And even the county, that's how the county looks at it?
For. City attorney, if you look at her memorandum dated today, her interpretation and conversation with the counties, county says it's eight lots of record. I don't want to speak for preferred city attorney, but I think that's what her memo says.
Is that right? Okay, and if, then if that's the case, then shouldn't it go completely back to the, to zoning board for the 26 variations?
If the replating into one lot is not brought forth, then yes, in my opinion, it should.
And.
If I may, Alderman Tolemy. Our, we were asked to provide, on behalf of the city, our legal interpretation of the status of this project. And for two reasons, it is my legal opinion that I'm tendering to you tonight, that you don't have control over bringing this property into zoning compliance. And that's based on two reasons. The first is I've been provided information and I verify that it, through looking at the court file, that this property actually first came to the city's attention in the mid 1980s because it was in deplorable condition. And so at that time, the city of Wooddale instituted a proceeding whereby they were either going to demolish the property or condemn the property so that they could bring the property into, into compliance. Or at least eradicate from the city property which was in bad condition, from what I am told. As a result of the filing of that litigation, the city entered into a consent decree. And as part of the consent decree, a private developer came into the situation, the private developer back in 1985 offered to take over the property and bring it into compliance. The city had actually funded a study of the property to determine what was necessary to, to bring the property into a safe and habitable living condition for all the tenants and to bring it into as much as possible compliance with the city's codes. As part of the 1986 settlement of the case, the city and the parties agreed that with the exception of any amendments to the life safety codes and the fees to be charged, the amendment of any existing ordinance of the plaintiff would not affect the property in any way. And that was, that was an agreement that inured to the benefit of any future owner of the property. This property has been considered, at least since 1985, an existing legal non-conforming use. As your city staff has told you, it is not in compliance with the city's codes. I don't think it was in compliance in 1985, but the city agreed that to the extent the engineering that was attached to the consent decree and the redevelopment plan that was attached to it, the city agreed to accept the property. In fact, the city and DuPage County, at least DuPage County I know, and I believe the city as well, provided financial assistance to bring the property into a more livable condition. Now, because of the existence of the 1985 consent decree, which had still, because it didn't have any termination provision in it, it still continues in existence, it's our opinion that the city can look at the property for purposes of life safety code and building code compliance, but it cannot force this developer to bring the property into zoning compliance. And in fact, the property probably could not bring, be brought into compliance with the city's current zoning codes unless it got variations, which is why, under the city staff's interpretation, the property was first taken before the zoning board of appeals for zoning variations. Now, as I sit here today, I, I don't know what plat the zoning board of appeals was looking at, but if it was looking solely at this property as it exists with a plat of survey, the plat for the property is a plat of subdivision which was recorded in 1963. It's eight lots of record. What city staff is relying upon for one PIN is a PIN that was applied to the property in 1995. It's a tax parcel PIN. It doesn't affect the fact that it's eight lots of record, but that doesn't matter really because what the developer is doing is attempting to do a condominium conversion. When you're doing a condominium conversion, you do a condominium plat, which is completely different than a plat of subdivision. So if the plat, if the condominium converter had come into the city, they would have brought their plat of condominium and that is what the city would have been looking at. Based on the fact that the 1985 consent decree to everything I've been able to determine continues to exist, I don't think we can apply zoning code, we can force zoning code compliance. Also, those municipalities that, there have been changes to the condominium act, condominium property act. It does allow municipalities the right to inspect the apartment building prior to conversion to condominium units. And it provides that the municipality may require that the new proposed condominium unit comply with life safety, building, and unfortunately, it says, and zoning codes. Now, to my knowledge, the city of Wooddale has never made a decision as to whether they are going to actually adopt any requirements for condominium conversion. We don't have a condominium conversion ordinance that I'm aware of. Our zoning, our codes don't address condominium conversion. So I, I, the city had never stated as a city whether they were going to actually require any new proposed condominium to comply. To the extent you want to, I believe that you can require this condominium property upon conversion to comply with all of your current life safety and building codes. That's even allowed under the 1985 consent decree. As to the zoning code, the problem that I have with the way the legislation was adopted in 1995, it would mean that you can bring each unit, each individual unit in compliance with the zoning code. I don't think, I think that's inartfully drafted. I don't think that that was the intent of the legislature. So I would say to you that what you should be doing, if you want to discuss the condominium conversion, is have the developer tender to the city.